I call the meeting of the Will Smith Town Council to order on March the 21st, 2022. Let us pray. Dear only Father, we thank you for the day. We ask that you be with us and lead us, guide us and direct us in the things that we need to do and say for the betterment of our community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we have the approval of the agenda, we have to add two items. Under the town administrator, it would be item number 20. We've got to add review of our debt payoff. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to go to eat the microphone. Okay. Under the closed session items, we need to add land acquisition. Does anybody have any more additions or corrections to the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve it as amended.
Have a motion from David McGowan to approve the agenda. Have a second. Councilman Randy Jernan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? The approval of the town of the town council meeting for February the 21st.
Make motion. Second.
We have a motion from... I have one question before we approve them. Emily, on the streets that were put into town, have you got it in front of you? The new streets that were put in, is that supposed to be South Rose Hill Drive? You've got a North Rose Hill Drive? Okay. Okay. It is supposed to be south. I would think it would be, so we need to correct that one. You made the motion, didn't you? J.C. Trippett made the...
I'll make the motion to accept the amendment as amended.
Okay, J.C. Trippett made the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
And David McGowan seconded. All in favor? Okay. I have not seen any closed session minutes.
They were left at town hall. That's what she was saying earlier. If we could, and I didn't think about that when you were approving the agenda, but if you can move those to April. They're done. They're just, they didn't get brought tonight.
Okay, so we need to move that item to our April meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I hear a motion? Randy Jernigan made the motion to move the closed session minutes approval to our April 17th meeting. And J.C. Trippett seconded. All in favor? I have one item that I need to... If I can find it. I have a thank you card. It says, "We deeply appreciate your expression of sympathy during our sister's home going. The floor arrangements was so beautiful. Thank you all so much from the Carol Dobbin family." Carolyn lost her sister, and we are sorry for that, but we are glad that everything was done. Okay? I don't have anything else, Leanna. So... Oh, I missed first open forum. Okay, sorry. I do that every time. I'm gonna have to start circling that. We open the first open forum at eight, I mean, 6:35. All those wishing to speak, please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one coming forward. I'll close the open forum at 6:37. What? Oh, she wants to come. Okay. Ms. Joan, you need to come. I'm sorry, I have to swallow this microphone. State your name. Address.
Hear me now? Okay, Joan Harris, 119 Sound Lane. It's yours. Okay, I'm here and representing my path up there, the road up there. I would like to have some work done, and I remember the last time I was here, had rent a custom dog. Councilman Randy Jernigan was looking into it. What did you find out?
I can't get to touch with the land on. And the town can actually go without his permission to do anything else.
But I would appreciate it.
And we can get Ruth Harper to come up. I could work on that this week.
Sorry. I can work on trying to get somebody to help me go up there and see what can be done, but the town actually can't do anything on it because it has to be approved by the property owner, and it's not a town on street.
Right.
And that's the, from my understanding, it's the big trees on the right-hand side coming in?
Yeah, on the left.
But it's the trees on the left-hand side?
Yes.
Okay. We'll see what we can do.
All right.
He's a hard man to get up with. I've called him probably three or four times a month.
I think I've called him too.
And I can't get in touch with him.
Okay.
This is Ruth Harper. My, our concern is, the road has holes in it, and it's not about to lay, but can't, you see by getting some gravel in there, fill up the hole?
I'm gonna say what I can do, but it is, the town actually doesn't have the right to go on that property and do it. But if we can find somebody that can volunteer some work, yeah, we can try.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else need, wishing to speak? We're closed. Closed the public forum at 6:39, Leanna. Now we're getting to good stuff.
Did you have anything else under yours? Okay. Okay, well, as you can see, we've got several annexations that have come in, and for each one of these, we're presenting you with the petition for annexation, and you should have maps for those in your, in your packets. And again, for each one, you'll need to do the resolution directing the clerk to investigate it, and then I've also included the certificates of sufficiency, and then you'll need to do the resolution to call the public hearing, and they do need to all be done separately. So I'll let the mayor guide the votes on those.
Okay, the first one we need is a resolution to have the clerk, direct the clerk to investigate 160, no. What is the...
You can reference it with the parcel ID if you want.
Oh, okay. Okay, the little property. That's where I was trying to find. I was trying to find it. Okay. We need a motion to direct the clerk to investigate the petition of annexation for the little property. And, and, who I needed to do that? Okay, okay. Randy Jernigan made the motion to ask the clerk to investigate the property, and David McGowan seconded. All those in favor? All opposed? Okay, then we have the certificate of sufficiency that Leanna has given us, telling us that she has investigated this property. Now, we need a motion to adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing on the little property. Parcel number 05106199D. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Trippett. All in favor? We have an annexation petition for Wayne Norman Strickland property. We need to pass a resolution to direct the clerk to investigate the property of Wayne Norman Strickland, parcel number 17J...
You did vote on that?
We voted on it, but we didn't fix the date.
Well, it's probably in the resolution.
It is.
It is.
It will be next month, April 18.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought... Yeah, it's in the resolution what, when the public hearing's gonna be. That's okay. Okay. Wait, 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 let me... That's where I was, right? Okay, okay, we need to adopt a resolution directing the clerk to investigate the petition of annexation for Wayne Norman Strickland property, parcel 17J07008.
So moved.
Okay, Leanna, you picked the one that said that. Okay, Tim seconded it. All in favor? Let it be known, I'm gonna say an aye. All opposed? Next, we have the certification of sufficiency from the clerk telling us that she has investigated the property. Now, we need a, to adopt a resolution. Let me see where I am. A resolution to call a public hearing for the annexation of the Wayne Norman Strickland property, parcel 17J07008. Carolyn Dobbin made the motion to adopt the public hearing. Randy Jernigan seconded. Okay. I'm sure I'm on the right one, y'all. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. We need to adopt a resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition of annexation for capital properties of Raleigh, parcel 17J07013.
So moved.
David McGowan made the motion. Randy Jernigan seconded. All in favor? Let it be known, I'm gonna say an aye. We have the certificate of sufficiency that the clerk has done so. Now, we need to adopt a resolution affixing the date of the public hearing for the annexation of capital properties of Raleigh, parcel 17J07013. Randy Jernigan made the motion to set the public hearing. Carolyn Dobbin seconded. All in favor? Let it be known, I'm gonna say an aye. I'm trying to check these off, so I won't get them. No, we got one more. This is the Strickland property, right? We need to adopt the resolution directing the clerk to investigate the petitions of the annexation of the Strickland property, 17K07010U.
Second.
Randy made the motion to, to accept this, and David McGowan seconded. All in favor? Let it be known, I'm gonna say an aye. All opposed? And we have the sufficiency of this investigation now. We need to adopt the resolution fixing the date of the public hearing for the annexation of the Strickland property, 17K07010U. J.C. Trippett made the motion to affix the date for the public hearing. Carolyn Dobbin seconded the motion. All in favor? Let it be known, I'm gonna say an aye.
Good job.
I'm totally confused.
Y'all might wanna get used to these. The next item on the agenda is a resolution. The next two items are resolutions to adopt the records retention schedule and the program records retention schedule. And first of all, I just wanna say that Emily is starting to take over the clerk's duties, and Emily handled all four of these annexations on her own. This was, these were her first annexations to do on her own, and she got four thrown at her one time. So I still have to sign them because I'm still officially the clerk, not for long, but I just wanna congratulate Emily on getting all of these done. She also did a lot of research on the records retention schedule updates, and for those of you who have been on here a while, you know that we have to go by the state's records retention schedule for all files in all of the offices, all the departments, and they have to update this schedule every now and then to add things or to change the date that things have to be purged, or can be purged, should I say. So the first resolution is to adopt the changes to the existing schedule. And there was some sheets in your packet that gave a summary of information on those different departments and different records that changed in those updates. So if anybody has any questions about those, if not, you can move forward with what you wanna do about that resolution.
I have one question.
Okay.
Is the difference between these, is it the first one is just changes, and the second one is a new redemption schedule? Is that basically what we're, we got to?
The, the second one, the program records retention schedule, is an additional schedule that they came out with that gets more specific into each department. Some of the records were a broad description, and especially in, in finance, there were several specific records that needed to be kept at different times than maybe other records, so they went in and did a more specific schedule, and that's what that second one is. But you'll need two votes. You'll need to vote to, to pass each one of those separately.
So I need a motion to pass the resolution to adopt the records retention schedule.
I make a motion that we move to adopt the resolution for retention schedule changes.
Do I have a second? Okay, David McGowan made the motion. J.C. Trippett made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we need a separate motion to adopt the resolution to adopt the program records retention schedule.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution for program records retention schedule.
David McGowan made the motion. Tim Brown made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion about the Crescent Mills reimbursement agreement, and I will let the attorney take it from here and explain to you what's been going on with that and what's in your packet for review.
Thank you, Leanna. So I was just doing a little bit of math here so I could give you guys, give you guys the accurate numbers. So Crescent Mills has been, is a development that you guys are probably familiar with, has been in the works for some time, and they have, I believe, 854 lots coming. And part of that, part of their development is to make certain, they have to have water and wastewater infrastructure, and in order to plan for the future growth of the town, the town has, and its engineers have looked at the possibility of requesting the developer to upsize the infrastructure to accommodate future growth in the basin. The drainage basin for, that Crescent Mills is located in, and we've got some of the developers' representatives here tonight. And ultimately, what this document does, we've reached an agreement with Crescent Mills, an agreement in, a draft agreement for Crescent Mills to construct upgraded sewer infrastructure that goes beyond their minimum requirements and is oversized in order to accommodate future growth in the basin for the town's benefit. The agreement essentially, as summarized, they will take the lead on putting it out for bid, and that they would construct it, and then the town would reimburse them the cost, the additional cost that they had to incur to upsize the facilities. So ultimately, what the town's looking at is if the total cost for the entire, there's two, there's sort of two parts to this. There's the, the gravity lines that the development will be utilizing, and then there's a pump station and a force main that's associated with that. I'm speaking as a layperson because our engineer has been, you know, much more involved on the technical side of it than I am, but essentially, there's been upgrades to the gravity lines and to the pump station and the force main in order to accommodate future town growth. The line, the development would only need an eight-inch gravity line, and the, and in order to accommodate the town's needs, it would have to be upsized to a 14-inch and 16-inch line in places for a total of 4,760 linear feet of line. The pump station is gonna be upgraded from 500 gallon per minute capacity to 1,000 gallons per minute, and the force main is gonna be upgraded from a six-inch line, which is what the developer needs for its development, to a 10-inch line for 9,945 linear feet. The developer has had their engineers prepare an estimate of the cost of these upgrades, and what they've done is they've looked at the total overall cost anticipated for the entire project, including the Crescent Mills costs, and then they've tried to determine how much less it would have cost to, to install just what the developer needs. And the, that's what I was trying to calculate really quick. The, the, those estimates are included in the item, the, in your packets as, as Exhibit A to the agreement. You'll see, if you flip to the, near the end there of your document, that if you'll see, find a page that's been highlighted, at least it's highlighted on mine. I don't actually have a page number to, to refer you to, but this is an opinion of probable cost for the development size construction, for the development, and this is for the gravity portion. All right, the, the estimate at the bottom there is $556,529. That's for the development only. If they, if they were to install the sewer sufficient, upsized sufficient to accommodate future town growth, it's $952,046. The difference there is $395,517. That's just for the gravity portion. If you go to the pump station and the force main upgrades, there's a separate engineer's opinion attached, and the overall construction budget for just the development is, he's a reverse, sorry, 2,008, 2,805,000. And if you go back one page, you'll see where the upsize cost to include the town's infrastructure, it's $3147,000. The difference there is $342,000. And I haven't added those two, but it would be over $700,000. That's the total cost to up, upsize this development in order to accommodate future development in that basin. Now, the agreement specifies that after they construct the, the upsized facilities, that they would turn to the town to reimburse them the cost of those upsizes. And the way that we've structured that portion of it is that it would be based on, in order to sort of have stepped payments over a period of time, we've divided that into four installments, and they would be due, since there's a total of 854 lots in the development, they would be due, due and owing to Greenfield, Greenfield's the developer, in four equal installments, and they would be for an equivalent number, so 854 lots, you divide that four ways, you get 214 plus one, but 214, so after, and it's based, so essentially, as houses are built in this development, and they get all the way through building them, they'll have the certificate of occupancy issued. Once they get through 214 certificates of occupancy in the development, that would trigger the first payment by the town of one quarter of the cost of the upgrades, and then a subsequent one after the next 214 certificates of occupancy have been issued, and then so on for the final third and fourth payment. The fourth payment would be due after all houses are constructed in the subdivision. You know, there, in case there's slightly less than 854, we left a little bit of flexibility there. So another thing about the way this is structured is that, as I stated before, since this is, this involves an expenditure of public monies, it has to go, the developer has to bid it as if it were a public entity. So that's in the agreement that they have to follow the public bid guidelines, and the town would review to ensure that they're compliant with that. Now, given the current economic and just reality that we're living in right now... instead of having, there, there becomes a time where we don't want to necessarily rely solely on the engineers. Let me say that a little differently, the engineer has provided an opinion of the probable costs of these upgrades, but this is currently there's a very, there's very dynamic costs, those can go up and down extremely fast over the course of sixty or ninety days. So by, by the time this thing is bid out, it could be quite a bit different than what the engineer, engineer is estimated. So what, the way we've structured this is they'll put it out to bid, that will get you the actual cost, right, as bid and once approved, that'll be the actual cost to construct those upsize, the infrastructure upsizing. Then at that point, based on the as bid cost, you know, based on a certain amount per linear foot for the pipe and so forth, an engineer will look at, the developer will have their engineer look at that estimate or those bids and estimate due to, you know, look at the reduction in linear feet that they would have had to install had they not upsize the facility. So for their own development, like I say, we would have only spent, you know, a certain amount, right? And so that's going to be their estimate of the delta between the total cost, which is upsize for the town's benefit, but, and the lesser cost that they would have incurred had they just installed what they needed and constructed what they needed. Now that we've built in a little bit of is sort of a safeguard for the town that if the town, town looks it over and decides that they don't agree with that estimate, that the town can get its engineer or an engineer of its choosing to also prepare an opinion of that, and if there's a difference, that the amount that the town will have to reimburse, the developer will be the, the average between the two, the mean between the two. So that is a lot, I know, and that while, there's one last important key to this. In order, the town wanted to try to cap the, the amount of cost that it might incur, especially given the volatility in the market. You know, the town didn't want to ink a deal, ink an agreement with the developer to do these upgrades and then hand it over to the developer and find out that the, these costs have escalated twenty-five, thirty percent and, and not be in a position to repay those funds, so. What the developer has agreed to do is to cap the total reimbursement that the town would owe to the developer, regardless of what the engineer's estimate is, if it was higher, at four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So, you know, again, if, if costs increase and the bid amount comes in much higher and then the engineer's estimate reflects a higher amount or more than four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, then the town would only be obligated to reimburse the developer a total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which I would point out to you is currently less than by a pretty good margin, the current engineer's estimate.
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You said that we do not make a payment until two hundred and fourteen houses are built.
That's correct.
So when the amount, the a fourth of four hundred and ninety-five thousand would be paid when two hundred and fourteen houses are built and so forth until they're all built out. What if, and I hope the developer don't have this problem, but what if they do not finish the subdivision?
That's a good question, but I think the way the currently, the, the way the agreement is currently drafted is that the installment would not be due.
Until the houses are built.
Right.
Okay.
Is there a bond issue that would come involved, be involved there?
Not, not in the agreement, no, I, I don't know if that would be triggered into develop, on the development side of things, but Ben's nodding.
Ben, who's, who's nodding?
Ben Taylor is, I want the project lead, I think, for the Crescent Mills development.
If there were, if there were a bond stipulation in here, would that not protect us? Should it not go through, should?
Right, if the houses aren't constructed.
So we need to talk with that gentleman.
Well, the, the thing about it is we don't have to pay the money unless the houses are built. So if they don't complete the, our part of the sewer still want to be underground.
I was going to say that, yeah, I think one thing that is sort of left aside there is that the, the infrastructure will be there. You know, that, that the development occurring or not is, is something that, that is handled with on the planning side, but as far as, you know, owing the money that had, they, they put this in the ground, right, and so it, you've already gotten the benefit of that, whether they build the houses or not.
That, that's what I was questioning because I know sometimes the market tanks and you can't build the houses, so I was wondering if, if they don't build the houses, would we still be liable for the money, but if, you know, if they build all of them, we'll be okay anyway because the infrastructure is going to be underground regardless at that, at that stage.
Correct.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Are you as confused as I am?
Yeah, please ask questions if you, if you have any confusion, I know.
Where's, where's the money coming from for us? That's a lot of money every, I don't know, it's going to take maybe for two hundred and fourteen homes to be built, that could very well be seven, eight, nine months, I don't know. That's a lot of money to keep coughing up twice a year.
It's going to become, okay, Leanne.
Right, so the, the installments would be around a hundred and twenty-three thousand per installment and the way we discussed it is that we're hoping we're starting to get some revenue back on some of those, whether it be from our sewer reimbursement from Johnson County tax revenue. Those should not, should not be an issue, we started doing some calculations on what our, our revenue coming back from those would be based on a regular construction time and.
It's a lot of money to hope on.
It's going to benefit the town in the long run a hundred times that, and so as we see these houses built and we start bringing this revenue in from these houses, because we're going to get our tax revenue, whether anybody buys the house or not. And then once they do occupy the house and sign up for the sewer, they're going, we're going to be getting that kickback from the county as well, so.
So. Go ahead, counsel. No, I was just going to add that, you know, it, there is, this has been, you know, some significant amount of negotiations and discussions to pull this together from an engineering standpoint and a legal standpoint. And of course, if there's tweaks on the, on the engineering or the technical side, then that sometimes requires changes to be made on the legal, on the, on the agreement. And so this has been coming together at the, on the eleventh hour, as you probably noticed from the late addition to your agenda. So if you do want to move forward, just, we would ask, I think staff would ask that we have the ability to make technical changes to the document to get it to the sat, final satisfactory version that the mayor or town administrator, the mayor could sign, be authorized to sign.
But the cap would not change.
Right, the cap, right, we wouldn't change the cap.
What, what we need is a motion to accept this agreement with Crescent Mills and giving our town administrator the approval to sign any technical updates that she needs, realizing that the cap would be four hundred and ninety-five thousand and this needs to be the way the motion is made so that we'll know all of that is in there.
And this is really far outside, probably outside the realm of possibility, but only that it wouldn't increase.
Yes, 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 that, only that it will not increase, this will be the total amount.
Right. And, and if I may add just a small amendment to that, i- is that you're the one who would be signing it, so.
Oh, I will be.
Instead of you be given, or Leanne be given the discretion that, that.
Okay, that I will be.
That, right, staff can make the changes and so that you can sign it.
Okay, that I will be, Leanne will, could make the changes, but I would be needing to sign it, okay. So do y'all understand how that motion's got to read?
Might want to write that down so we don't get, get it messed up, is, is this a good, can we continue to ask questions?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Brown has one.
Yes, go right here.
Yeah, I, so it, it explained to me the four, four hundred and ninety-five thousand cap. Because a- as you were reading that, I, I come up with a lot more than that.
Yes.
That's right.
But that's going to be our.
There's a, there's a certain, so part of the, part of what's playing a role in this as well is the, you know, developer desires to proceed with their, their project with all due haste and part of what we can't get away from on a legal side is that since it involves an expenditure of public funds, that it has to be publicly bid. Now, there is a five hundred thousand threshold in order to invoke formal public bidding guidelines or requirements. And this cap is just under that, so it would fall in the territory of informal bid requirements, so that's a, that's a, that's a factor in, in the cap.
So just, just so I make sure I understand, so our, our cost would be a cap of four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Correct.
Anything over that would be the developer.
They're, they're taking a risk that, that if, if the total cost to upsize the sewer is more than four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that they're, they're going to incur that cost. Okay, have to absorb that cost.
My next question would be is what if we don't increase the capacity? How, how does that, I mean, those that know more about sewer, I mean, if, if, if we go with just what they, they have to have at this point.
Then I invite, my very non-technical understanding is they're filling up that line a hundred percent and so you, you can't put anything else through it.
Right.
You can't access anything upstream of them.
Wasn't it this council at some point in time that asked for the increased and increased capacity? So it's, that's on us.
Yes.
It's not on the developer. The developer was happy with just their, their minimum and we were not, so I just want to make it clear that we started this whole thing.
Well, in, in my opinion, Tim, your, your subdivision is not sewer. This would give us a good reason and more accessibility to a sewer to get y'all sewer, so whenever you're.
And I, and that was the reason for my question is, is looking at, at town residents that now live in town, would this benefit them?
Yes, absolutely.
And not just additional gross, but growth, but those that are actually in the city limits now that, that need or want the sewer.
Yes, sir, a, the last time we, Leanne, if I'm not mistaken, the last time we priced a lift station was almost nine hundred thousand dollars just for the lift station. And that was for a subdivision that has less than twenty-three homes in it. That this is going to be a big benefit to everybody on that side of Seventy Highway.
So once, once we, once mayor signs this on behalf of the town, we are locked in.
For this amount, yes.
For this amount.
Correct.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Well, unless it comes in less than that.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I, I'm just trying to get, I know we started this whole dilemma here and I think we're doing the right thing for the town. For those folks, it's, it's a win, am I okay? It's a win-win situation, I just, I'm just trying to get that warm fuzzy feeling for that kind of money, that's all. And I, and I think we can do that, I think, I see the, I see the stuff that's coming down the line. It's just that in, in today's day and age with, with the economy, the way it is, with the world, the world stage changing almost overnight, it seems, I, I just, I, I have that little bit of reservation, but I have to look at it for the town and, and I'll go with it.
And it would just be on the other side of seventy, you say?
That, this would be, yes.
This would be just on the other side, not on this.
So how do you want this resolution to read there, counselor? To make it perfect, because there's a lot of money involved here.
You mean, do you mean the, how, how to make the motion?
Yeah.
Right, so it would just be a motion to approve the agreement with, well, it's Greenfield, Greenfield Communities LLC for sewer upsize and okay, allow for the technical staff to make technical changes.
Under action requested, would it not be fine just to read it as it is?
Well, he, he's wanting to put, instead of Crescent Mills to put in.
Sure, yeah, I didn't see that, sorry. Right, with, it's Greenfield Communities.
Greenfield, okay, so, all right.
And it's not the town administrator who signs, it's, it's the mayor, just.
Okay, Greenfield Community, all right, so I, I make a vote that we approve the draft reimbursement agreement with Greenfield Communities and Exhibit A attachments with approval for the, the town mayor to sign following completion of all technical updates with the town cost no more than four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to, I hear second. Randy Jernigan made the second, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, now Leanne, Leanne is going to talk to us about the, the debt payoff that we.
Yes, so as of this afternoon, when we left the office, we didn't have.